We have enough rate revenue coming in over the next five, 10, 20 years to support the long-term control plan. And so we're going to look at, you know, some of the high-level assumptions that went into that plan, how we're kind of layering those future cost requirements and investments into the plan, and then how the rates, what kind of level of rate we need to support that.
Mayor, have you been able to allow him to share the screen?
I have to make him the host of the meeting. So that's what I was waiting for Joe to pause talking, so I can make him the meeting host. But Joe, when you're finished, just make sure you don't leave here without giving it back to me, or else she'll shut the meeting down.
Certainly. I think I just got noticed.
Yeah, you should have noticed, then just take it over, and you'll be able to share your screen.
Okay, I should be sharing the title screen of a presentation. Please let me know if that is not the case.
No, we can see it.
Great. So, you know, as I was kind of alluding to a minute ago, and as we've discussed previously, you know, what were our real objectives as we embarked on this study? And it's a few things. The first was to kind of evaluate where the sewer enterprise is financially right now. And that really gives us the foundation for making our longer-term planning projections. And so we understand where we're at, and we developed that multi-year financial planning forecast. And then we try to understand, do the current rates and fees and the projected rates and fees, how well do those support that plan and those future costs? And then if we need to adjust the rates to be able to support future operating needs and the future capital investments, which are key for the city of Tiffin, how would those rates need to change over time in order to support that plan? And as we develop these plans, as you might imagine, we're building something that's looking out 20, 30 years into the future. There's several key inputs, several key assumptions that we have to make that really underpin the forecast. The first one is on our number of accounts that we have on the sewer system, and how much they use the system, how much flow is going through the sewer system. So what we do for that assumption particularly, we've assumed basically that our number of accounts will start at where we're at right now. And we've got a growth rate of a quarter percent per year layered into our financial forecast. We do continue to show some growth in the number of accounts in our system, but not an extravagant number. We're not building in a lot of aggressive growth assumptions into that number. And that does drive a portion of our revenue projection. And on the flow side, historically, we have seen a reduction in the build sewer volumes from our customers, because folks are using a little less water with high-efficiency appliances and low-flow fixtures. So we've kept the flow assumption constant to reflect that, you know, even if we're growing, we might be using a little bit less in terms of volume. So we've held that one constant, which is a pretty common thing that we're seeing across the industry and with other clients right now. Our operating costs, we've used the current year's budget as our basis for our operating costs, and we're escalating that for various inflationary factors. It's around two and a half to three percent all-in, once you kind of put all the factors together. And that's again, based on historical trends, as well as kind of historical CPI, you know, last year or two is not a great indicator of what inflation looks like. But for a long-term forecast, we want to make sure we're recognizing that in the financial plan. Capital projects and capital financing, we're going to talk a lot about those in the next few slides, so I'm going to skip that one going into detail. And then financial policy targets, it kind of gets to key things are, you know, what is our cash reserve position look like? As an enterprise fund, we have to make sure we're bringing in enough revenue every year to pay our bills, to make sure we've got enough to pay back any debt that we've borrowed, and then that we've got enough security to have funding available for any emergency repairs that might pop up. A large sewer repair could cost hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars, and we need to have some money on hand to be able to help us get through any of those unforeseen circumstances. And so we manage all of that through the long-term planning process. So if we want to kind of step back through our objectives, again, the first one was kind of where are we at right now? Right now, the city of Tiffin Sewer Enterprises is very well-positioned financially, as we head into this period of substantial capital investment related to the long-term control plan. The historical rate increases have put the city in the strong position, and we have healthy cash reserves, and that's going to really be helpful as we balance borrowing for future projects and paying for those projects with cash, both from our rate revenue and from those reserves. So that lets us kind of limit how much exposure we have to new debt, to new borrowing, in order to make these important and required investments. So we're able to balance that. We're also able to sort of time, you know, when we might need to go to the market or borrow for funds. So we've also kind of projected, you know, revenue, and where we're at right now, we're generating enough positive cash flow that we can support the renewal and replacement of the existing assets in the system. So even regardless of the long-term control plan projects, we have, you know, a lot of sewer mains and pipes out there, lift stations, other assets that need to be renewed and replaced because they're getting old. And so we've got the revenue that helps us support that process. And then what we've also tried to do is that consistent, regular annual increases ultimately leads to a lower customer cost in the long run. And that's sort of what the policy has been adopted by Tiffin already, but we were kind of continuing that, and that is a very true thing. If we wait, we're deferring rate increases, and that rate increase needs to be a lot bigger to be able to fund some of those projects. And so we want to be nice and slow and steady, predictable, but it also keeps the rate as low as possible over the long term. So on the capital financing side here, this is a 20-year lookout over how we are planning to finance our projects. So along the bottom is sort of a steady green component, that's rate revenue. We're bringing in revenue each year, and we're going to divert a part of that to pay for our capital needs. And that's mostly paying for those ongoing replacement projects that I mentioned. We're going to borrow for a portion of our projects, and we're going to pay you sort of some of those cash reserves that I mentioned to pay for the others. You can see there's sort of five big chunks of money in there for the long-term control plan elements. So the plan expansion from '21 through '23 funded with with SRF money. The equalization basin '24 and '25, that's partially funded with SRF money, and we're showing partial cash financing to offset some of that borrowing. Same thing for the Phase One improvements, Phase Two improvements, and then you see the Phase Three improvements sort of at the end of this 20-year cycle. All-in, when we kind of look at this together, we've got a very balanced approach, such that about half of the investments we're making, we're going to borrow for over the long term with state revolving funds. And then the remainder will be cash-financed through both that combination of rate revenue, as well as some of the reserves that we're able to, that we were able to build up now, and then that will continue to accumulate kind of as we go through the process, and we'll spend them down, and we'll build them up, and then we'll spend them down. And that's, you know, what we're paying out on actual capital projects. But how that translates into actual annual expenditures, annual requirements, is a little bit different. Because of for those loans that we're borrowing, we amortize that over a 20, 25-year period. We don't have those huge spikes in the cost, but we definitely see some very substantial increases in those costs. So this graph is showing our annual revenue requirements, how much money we need to bring in each year. Capital projects. You can see that our existing debt, the dark blue at the bottom, you know, it starts to go away after 2026, and it's gone 2033. But it's definitely replaced by the lighter blue that kind of takes over the graph towards the end of that period. And then in addition to that, we have the annual renewal replacement costs in the green, and then some of our budgeted capital outlay for smaller things like equipment, vehicles, that sort of thing also layers in there as a capital element. But a quite a big increase from the current, just under $3 million cost requirement, up to almost six over a 20-year period. And that's really what's kind of the primary driver of the long-term need, as we all know, that the long-term control plan was going to be driving a lot of our costs. And it seems like, you know, maybe bad news is coming, but based on kind of where we're at right now, where we project revenues to go, how we've identified financing those capital projects, we can maintain that strong financial position with annual sewer rate increases of 4% versus the currently right now, 5% per year that are as part of the ordinance. So I might have been building up to a big reveal, but it's actually a very positive statement. Where we're at now, again, we're in a strong position, which gives us the flexibility to actually moderate off of the 5% a year increase down to 4% and still maintain a very strong financial position. And this graph here kind of shows what that looks like as a picture. Certainly, we can talk through any details. But the black line is our revenue projection with that very minimal account growth in there, along with a 4% annual increase. And you can see that increases over time. And then you can see how our other cost requirements layer in to use that revenue source up. And the operating costs are there at the bottom, the existing debt, which is rolling off, the new debt rolling in, and then our cash-financed capital in the yellow. With the gray bar, what you're seeing there is sort of a using those cash reserves. So for the next three years, we're showing transferring some money into the capital reserve, and that's doing, is that's setting up our ability to pay for a part of the equalization basin with with cash, as we saw on the screen a couple slides ago. And then we gradually put a little bit in there every year, so that when we're paying for Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three improvements with that blended structure of half cash, half loans, we've got the money ready so that we can appropriately finance and kind of sustainably finance those improvements and not pass all the costs on onto a 30-year, 30-year note. And here's a disclaimer slide, I'm not going to read it. And that's sort of the end of our kind of planned slides there. We wanted to open it up now and have any conversation. We can look back at any of those slides and talk through any of the details or particulars. That's kind of, again, a high-level review of what we had worked through with staff. Definitely wanted to share with you all and get any feedback or reactions that you have to it.
Thank you, Joe. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Joe?
Uh, I'm sure I do, but...
Go ahead, Councilman Jones.
Well, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, President Ford. I missed the first five minutes. I had problems getting on the thing, and then my volume was down. And just in a nutshell, and I missed part of Joe's presentation, but there's going to be even a 4% enough money for this, either $83 million or $109 million by 2040. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, in a nutshell, we're, the city's in a strong position now with 4% annual increases. We're able to finance all of the long-term control plan projects, as well as continuing to reinvest in the existing infrastructure that's out in the system right now.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Rich, I don't know if you probably can't see me, I've got my hand up.
Okay, no, I can't see you, Mayor. Go ahead.
No, I'll keep it short. I just want to thank Joe and his team for putting this together. While I know we're never excited about sewer rate increases, the fact that it's been, what, probably 12-plus years ago, the voters of Tiffin were told that their sewer rates would go up 5% a year in perpetuity. The nice part is that we're able to sit here and inform them that the increase is actually not going to increase by as much as they were told years ago, and that it will only go up 4% per year now. And I think it's a sign of responsible government, the fact that we are sitting here as local leaders, and we could have easily said, no, we want to keep the rates 5%, just to ensure we have all this extra money in the sewer fund. But here we are, being responsible stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And the moment that we came to the realization that we are able to actually decrease that increase per year, we are here in front of you all, basically with the recommendation saying, please move forward with this 4% a year increase instead of the original 5%. Is it huge amounts of money back into people's pockets? No. But at the end of the day, it does put more money back into the pockets of our residents and shows that we are governing responsible down here at City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor.
And one, can, if one thing, sorry, I forgot to mention, just want to be clear, the increases, the 4% increases would be applied to the current rates, which were, again, reduced in July. So we're not, we haven't built in a reset to where they were before, and then 4%. It's 4% from the current levels, which were reduced in July.
Thanks, Joe. Councilman Leopard?
I know the answer to this, but I just want to run it up the flagpole anyway. That includes our commercial and our non, our non-residence users as well.
Correct. All of the customers are in there, residential, non-residential, as well as inside and outside city.
That's what I really meant outside city. Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Joe, before you forget, make me the host again. Also, I'd hate for you to
Sure.
forget exit here and have our whole meeting shut down. So thank you.
Do that.
If there are any other questions, I'm sure Joe or myself or Dale Thornton would be happy to answer. I do see on here that we have Matt Watson watching us, so if there are any more engineering-type questions about cost, I'm sure Matt could also answer those. But we appreciate the time that Joe and his team have put into this. I think it's good news overall that, you know, I think we are all a little fearful, what happens if this shows that 5% a year is not enough, and we actually have to increase rates further? The good news is that did not happen, and we're actually able to back off a little bit on the rate increase now.
Thank you, Joe. If there's no other further questions, I think we'll go ahead and move on in the, in the meeting.
Great. Well, thank you all for the time and allowing me to be here today. Mayor, I believe I made you the host. Can you confirm that you received it?
Yes, I have it back. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks, y'all. Have a great night.
All right, we're back to, back to regular business. Does anyone have anything for Committee of the Hall? Law Director?
Yeah, one, I guess, follow-up to the presentation. At some point, if you act on this, the recommendation or what the study results are, you would need an ordinance that would decrease the 5% to 4% effective March 15th of each year. So there's time for that. That shouldn't be an emergency. So it'd be an ordinance that you'd read at three meetings, regular meetings, and allow 30 days after for it to go into effect. You have plenty of time for that, but at some point, you need to bring your thoughts and discussions together with a direction of for legislation.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I would just recommend, Mr. President, that council keep this moving, and we don't wait until too late with the dates on hold. So I'm not sure if you want to put this to committee, or everyone heard enough tonight. We could draft legislation here in the near future, but I, I think we would like to see this begin to go through the process as soon as possible, so that it's done and taken care of before March gets here.
Councilman Leopard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would suggest that we make that recommendation to tonight, to the Law Director to proceed with the 1% discount on our sewer rates, and I assume it'll probably help the city in budgeting as well, preparing for the budget.
Okay. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second that motion, and I just want to preface it. In the past, I've been kind of a naysayer on this. I just want to commend previous city council members and city administration back in 2008 for being, had the foresight to look at this 5%. And so I'll second the motion. Thank you.
Okay. We have motion and second. Law Director, do we need to take this up under regular business, or do we do this in Committee of the Hall?
Yeah, no, Committee of the Hall is fine, because all you're doing is you're recommending the legislation then to be prepared, so it can be introduced at a regular council meeting. So that's just like any committee action.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion and second. Is there any other discussion? I'd like to see by a show of hands, is there anybody here?
Alba Tyler.
Alba Tyler. All right, I'd like to see, so show of hands, all those in favor of the motion to have Law Director prepare legislation. Motion passes 6 to 0. So ask Law Director to go ahead and prepare that. Is there anything else in regards to that? We're going to, with, with Dora coming up, one of the things that we're going to need to do, we're going to have to have a third meeting to consider the passage of Dora. So we're going to have to have a special meeting, and the meeting is either going to have to take place on Monday, the 23rd of November, or Monday, the 30th of November. So the question to all of you is, how does that look on your calendars? Hopefully, we'll have everyone here. 23rd and 30th of November. Councilman Yonatuni, you're good? Okay. Councilman Jones, you're good? Okay. Councilman Perry?
As long as it's, I work until 6:00, anytime after 6:00.
Okay, all right.
Leopard's good.
Councilman Leopard, okay. Councilman Gillig?
Checking parent-teacher conference dates, and either of those days will be just fine.
Okay, very good. Councilwoman Boyle?
Yeah, I should be good, either of those dates.
All right. So I'll ask Brother Shuff when he gets on. That works for him. We won't set, we won't set the date tonight, but it'll be one of those two dates. Well, the presentation didn't take as long as we thought it was going to, so now we have some time. Councilman, Councilman Leopard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for the Law Director. I am sitting on a vacation petition, number 102, from Tiffin Riverfront Development. Should I continue to sit on that until they become the owner of the property?
I'm not sure that that is what is the critical point, but I think the administration and the mayor can speak to this more. But I believe at this point that we are waiting on further information on the development from the developer before we would take any action. So I don't think that you need to schedule a meeting and actively consider that request at this time.
Thank you. Our agreement with them runs out on December 31st. Will that take, that'll take council action to extend, and will an ordinance be necessary, or?
Well...
Voice vote not to extend? I don't know.
We're waiting on information from the developer to see the plans. As you know, the COVID-19 affected a lot of development, including this development, as the developer had presented late spring, and wanted some additional time. So I think it's best to wait to hear back and see kind of where the plans are with the development and what the proposal might be. At this point in time, I don't know what the future plans on timetable or any potential changes. I just don't know. It's lack of information right now.
Thank you.
Law Director, I'd received, I received an email. I talked to the mayor about this, but I received an email, it was more in lines of a complaint about, about yard signs, political yard signs, and language on political yard signs. There was one that this person's found to be offensive. And I guess the question is, is there, is there any, any requirements for when political signs have to be removed from property, or the language on a yard sign?
Go ahead. Yeah, the, the answer, I believe, is that, well, there is, there was a court case 15, 20 years ago, that ruled that the time limitations of before and after a, an election violated the property owner's constitutional rights of free speech. And although there, there, I'm not aware of any particular cases in the state of Ohio on the subject, but you could use that case to say that even the content of that free speech might be a constitutional violation, if there's some effort to, to try to prevent that or to block and censor whatever the person wishes to say. Now, there may be some rational basis for some regulation. I'd have to look and research into it. But what, what you always have to be concerned about is whether does that interfere with a person's First Amendment right of free speech? And political speech is, is pretty widely unregulated, you know, that, that as a kind of a basic premise of First Amendment rights, we don't want to place a lot of constraints on somebody's right of political speech. That's kind of a bedrock principle of our, our country. So I can do some research on it, but I think we want to be very careful about any regulation on the content of political speech.
Thank you. I failed to mention this from the very beginning, but it also, it's great to see the mayor back, feeling better. Great to have him here this evening. Part of our group again. So we hope that, we hope you're feeling better, and you're on a fast road to, to full recovery.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very happy to be back here.
Do we have any suspensions this evening, or?
Mr. President, I have none.
Okay. Go ahead. Law Director?
Just a couple of procedural items. Ordinance 20-110 and 20-112, both are zoning matters, and the charter requires that a joint public hearing is scheduled on that following its first reading. And so, and it has to be at least 15 days in the future. So with our typical procedure, after those ordinances are introduced, it'd be appropriate to have a, entertain a motion to table each of those, and then also to schedule a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission. And the earliest for, at a regular meeting, would be on the 16th of November. That's the same night, though, that That's the same night, though, that keep in mind that the Dora hearing is scheduled tentatively for seven o'clock, but it could be after that, the Dora hearing.
When we schedule the public hearings, it's got to be for a specific purpose. We can't schedule a public hearing for multi purposes.
No, you you have to have a you can have multiple public hearings the same evening, but you have to specify the purpose.
Okay, do we have to announce different times for those?
You should, you know, and and if it's just fall naturally follows, then, you know, if you want to, I don't know how many, what comments that you'll have, but you could make the the hearings for that the planning commission at 7:05. And I'm sure that the Dora will not, I mean, it may go after more than five minutes, but people can, the playing commission members can wait.
So we want to do them first? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I've already sent out the the notice to the newspaper for Wednesday's publication at 7:00 P. M.
Okay. One public hearing for the planning commission would cover both ordinances?
Yes, you could just make sure that the in the announcement that that you include both of them.
Okay. Anything else? Well, hopefully we'll be able to get through this meeting rather quickly this evening. Looks like we have a fairly thin agenda, so. Does anyone else have anything? Councilman Perry?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I was kind of waiting until we had some free time to to bring this up, but it's going to bring up an idea to come up with some kind of orientation packet for new members. I know speaking from experience when when I started, I didn't know, didn't really know much. First, second, third reading, didn't really know what that was, emergencies. So just something to put together for a new member that would explain all the terminology that is used, maybe go through like a mock agenda. And I don't know, maybe that would fall under labor and personnel to kind of come up with something, but I thought it would be beneficial, just try and get the new people up to speed a little faster, I guess.
Law Director, have we ever done anything like that in the past? Go ahead.
Yes, I believe that I sent a I typically have tried to send a letter to new council members. It may not have all the topics that Dan had mentioned, but I believe that I gave some information. I can add to it, you know, definitely. I think some of you have that letter. Dan, I thought maybe I if I didn't send it to you, I apologize. I should have, but I believe that I sent it to some of the other newer council members. But that's a start. I if you like, we can expand on it to topics that that, you know, I was trying to understand, think what would be kind of some foreign terms and some procedures that you should know and get up to speed rather quickly. But Dan, did you do you recall getting the letter from me? I thought I sent to you.
I I could have and and at the time, maybe like, I don't know, a lot of information to take on at once. So if I actually had, you know, maybe a sit down meeting where you could actually, you know, show like an agenda and stuff like that, I think would be beneficial. Because it took me a couple of readings to figure out what emergency meant and how it was used and, you know, the purpose behind it, just and I'm sure it very well could have been in in that letter that you sent. But I just thought it'd be, you know, to get more like hands on, I guess, help right away, you know, obviously, I don't think we're have to worry about it until well, potentially Councilman Shuff moves on if he wins, so.
Well, I will, I would be more than happy to meet with new council members and go through an orientation and we could have others, you know, the anyone else who would like to be a part of that, whether it's a a public meeting, we could have multiple people there, including the the president of council. It's up to whomever, but I'll be more than happy to help with that, that type of orientation.
Yeah, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Perry makes a excellent suggestion there and Law Director Howard, I'm thinking he sent me something as a new council member and I'm sure I read it. And it just seemed foreign to me at the time, and maybe it's me. Based on that same thing, it'd be nice if a senior council member could take a new member such as myself under their wing and meet with them face to face, or I guess Law Director Howard could do that, but to me, sitting face to face with someone drawing a picture or something makes much more sense as far as a learning curve to me than it does get an email and this is what's how city council runs or how you're expected to act or whatever you did send me and I can't recall what was in there, but I do recall getting something. So yes, I think that's a great thing. Some kind of orientation and and I'll sit through it.
Well, there's a lot of procedural things that we get into also, and I think that those things can become somewhat confusing. And I think it helps a lot if you have a basic understanding of how Robert's rules work in public meetings. I know that there's still a lot I have to learn yet, too, so I think, Law Director?
Yeah, just another opportunity. If you would like to attend the Charter Review Commission meetings, that is a very helpful kind of systematic way of going through the whole charter that includes the council and legislative a part of the charter. And so you will, if you do that, you will read it. And that's what I do, even even if I I've been around for 25 years looking at this, but I read the charter probably parts of it on a regular basis and and like to go back and every time there's a different situation because the facts and circumstances sometimes make me look at it differently, so it's a constant reread. And so that'd be a good place to start. If you have free time and you want to read something, read the charter. That helps you understand the the structure of of not only your job, but how you fit in with the other parts of city government. But go to the Charter Review Commission meetings and they're by Zoom right now. The next one is on the 27th, I believe. So and that that one in particular involves council and the legislature. That's Article three and four. So if you read those and attend, I think we'll all learn something.
And that's at 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock on Tuesday, the 27th, I believe.
And we had a problem with the last one. There was something with the password or?
Yeah, we had we had a little notice issue.
We've got that all worked out?
I believe so.
Yeah, again, I think it would be great if as many of us as possible could turn in tune into those and make any comments that you have. These are rules that we we operate by, so it's important for us to, A, understand them and if there's things in there we want to tweak to pass out on to the to the commission. Anyone else? Anything? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't really want to tip my hand till the next Charter Review meeting, but again, based on what Councilman Perry's suggesting, it took me a year and a half to get a grip on skipping the three reading rule and passing things at emergency. Several council people have discussed it with me. The Law Director has reexplained it at least three times, if not four, either in a meeting or one on one in his office. The last Charter Review, I'm sorry, two Charter Review meetings ago, I voiced in said that I wanted to make a change to the number of times we can skip the three reading rule, et cetera, et cetera. I wasn't clear what I was asking. And since that time, again, I've talked to a few of my coaches and the next thing when it comes, if they ask me, what was I talking about? I'm going to use one of Councilman Shuff's thing I'm tapping out on being against the three reading rule emergencies because I participated in many, many of those, so it's kind of hard for me to throw stones at something when I'm being a regular participant. So so yes, it did take me a long time to get a handle on that. And again, what we're talking about is someone would have sat me down and drew me a picture and talked in layman's terms, I guess, but had a better understanding of it, but I guess maybe I'm just a slower order herself.
Anyone else? Ian, how are you doing? Good. Your your mics turned off.
Talking in sign language?
You're you're muted.
Sorry about that. No, everything's good. We're back in the area, so moving forward. Thank you very much.
Good. This Saturday is trick or treat night in Tiffin. I don't know if you were going to bring that up in your report, Mayor?
Sunday, Mr. President.
Sunday, excuse me, the 25th?
Yes.
Okay. Right, right date, wrong day. From 68, correct?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since we're in the council of the whole, I and you didn't ask about motions yet, but when you do, I was going to make a motion, but I guess if we discuss it now, maybe I don't need to make a motion. But my emotion, emotions, excuse me, my emotions are taking over. My motion was going to be understood Mayor Monson say parking lot six behind Kears is no longer going to be part of the new Dora program in January 1st. Madison Street, 1 through 25 odd numbers are, to best of my knowledge, lined up along parking lot six. So if we don't have parking lot six in there, I was going to suggest we don't have 1 through 25 odd in the ordinance, and maybe I'm nitpicking, but it just seems it would be clearer if that wasn't in there, so I'll throw that out for discussion, I guess, and maybe I don't need to make a motion.
Well, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Law Director, but 1 through 25 are not in the revised map. I looked at it today. It starts at 33 to it's all on Madison Street, correct? Yeah, it starts at 33, the 120 and 139 to 159, 33 to 120 odd and even addresses and 139 to 159 odd. So 1 to 20 through 25 is not in there. Go ahead, Councilman Jones.
Thank you. You and I are still on here, I guess. I'm looking at something different than you are and and I can again, we're talking about ordinance 2065. And what I'm looking at on the street addresses in the Dora, Madison Street is still on my copy, 1 through 25 odd and 26 through 120 even and odd. Now, I'm not sure what you're looking at, but it's
You're looking at what we passed back in in June, whatever the date was. All right, well, this is this is moving ahead. This is the new one. But those are all things we discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, how comes I don't have an updated copy of this?
It hadn't been presented yet. You could have gone down pick these up. They're outside the building. That's where I got my copy.
Now you tell me, okay, all right. So I don't need to make that a motion then.
No. You're good. Anyone else? Councilman Shuff?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Just wanted to get your recommendation here. What you and I had discussed last week and I had discussed with a few of the other council members, when do you think could be the best time to bring that up?
What? Look, we have time right now. Let's bring it up now.
Okay. Let me grab a grab my sheet here. Oh, you know what? I can go off the top of my head. So a few weeks ago, I know that we were discussing the different Dora cups. I know one thing that was important to Councilman Gillig and many others on here was possibly having a cup that was recyclable. The way it sits right now, the cups that we do not or the cups that we have currently are not recyclable. But in doing some investigation and some price comparing here with some local areas, I actually found a cup that is 100% recyclable and it's actually a recycled cup itself. We can get these for nine and a half cents a piece as opposed to the 50 cents to 75 cents that the businesses are currently paying, which would save means we're getting them basically for one fifth of the cost of what we were getting before, but that's cheaper for the business owner, cheaper for the consumer. But we can get these here locally and the company that I was talking to or inquiring with, they can actually store the cups where we're not doing such small runs and small batches where they deal directly with the businesses and the city really doesn't have much to do with it.
What about the logos, the printing on these?
As far as the logos go, I mean, there's a few different ways we can do it. And I talked to some of the various businesses and they didn't really seem to care whether their logo was on it or not, but if we go with a one of a kind or a straight run of these cups, you could have the initials of each one on the back. You could have a number. You could have each of the 10 or 12 logos on there. So I mean, we could, we could do this a lot cheaper than what we've been doing and a lot simpler, but the businesses could take a marker, check mark, or just do a quick circle while they're filling the drink. It takes literally half of a second to do that. We want to know where the cup's coming from.
Law Director, do we have to, do we have to have a picture of the cup for the state or how does that work?
Yeah, the the ordinance that you pass in the are you passed before last summer and I believe the one going forward, it would direct the city administrator to come up with the design of the of the cup. So it's not specifically in the application now, but it is authorized in the ordinance. When it is completed, it needs to be presented to both the Division of Liquor Control and the Department of Public Safety. They're the liquor agent people. When we present all the legislation that to them that and the legislation, the application, the process we went through. So to answer your question specifically, yes, we have to have a picture of the cup. And so you need to have that resolved as soon as and really before you you vote on it so that we can then submit it to those offices for their review and approval.
Okay. Is that is that something that could be done later on?
Well, it does. It's not a part of the application or the legislation. So it is something, though, that I believe the city administrator is going to be authorized to do, but should take some direction from council. And if there's a consensus of council of what it could look like and that works with the issues of law enforcement that, you know, that you've expressed in the past, and then I I think that the I think the city administrator would like to know that information earlier than later, working with Amy Reinhardt to get the the look of the cup prepared so that we can easily submit it in, let's say, late in December and get that approved. So we're ready to go January 1st. So I wouldn't wait too long.
Okay. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just while we're discussing this, Thank you, Mr. President. And just while we're discussing this, I'm big on recycling myself, and I know a lot of other people are. But let's say the tration, if the city workers pick it up, are we expecting the city workers to open these bags and pick out all these recyclable cups? And I just question whether that's going to happen on a daily, weekly, monthly, yearly basis. So I'll throw that out for thought.
Mayor?
Yeah, we're not going to sort the recyclables. We're not going to hunt into things. We just don't have the manpower for it. And the last I was told that, uh, that was one of the prerequisites from our trash hauler was uh, they're not going to sort our recyclables. They're not going to pick them up. However, if we would pick them up and sort them, they would gladly take the recyclable items. So that's where we get back to the issue with the collection of it. They have seen it fail in way too many other communities where there are these recycle bins throughout, like a downtown area or something like that. They said it's great in theory. The problem is people walk along, especially if you're dark, they're not paying attention. They just throw things in the closest receptacle. And they said that the vast majority of these are contaminated. So, um, we're not, we have no interest in doing it and we will not be doing any collection of recyclables here at the city. Now, if private businesses want to get recyclable cups that they can have hauled out from their business, that's great. We encourage it. Wonderful for them, but we are not going to do it in public trash bins and recycling bins in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Schiff.
Yeah, I totally agree with the mayor. We don't want our public works, people digging through trash just to save a couple of cups. Um, I think this does open the door, though, if a business does want to have a little recycle bin, maybe by the door or something like that. I don't ever foresee 100% of these cups getting recycled, but even if we can lighten our footprint, uh, it gives us the option to figure out a way maybe down the road to recycle some of this. I don't, I don't foresee 100% of it getting recycled, though it does give us the option.
Well, we're saving money on the cups. Right?
One, one fifth of the cost of what people are paying now, actually even a little bit less than that even. Saves the business owners' monies during these hardest times, these hard times, and, uh, same with the consumer.
Uh, Mayor, do you have, uh, do you have any thoughts other, one way or the other about this?
I think we get the, the cheapest, most effective cup that we can, the most affordable. And if this cup is, is what it is, and it can lower the cost, we might as well use it. I just don't want people thinking that, that our staff is collecting all of this downtown. That's the one thing I want to, I want to be clear of.
Okay. Um, Councilman Schiff, I'm going to turn this over to Economic Development Downtown Planning Committee, and I want you to come back with a game plan.
Okay, I will get a hold of Amy and Dale and we will all put our heads together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mayor?
Um, lucky or unlucky for you all, depending on how you look at it, uh, the Facebook Live function is down this evening. So, uh, this meeting will not be on Facebook. Uh, I've already posted something on Facebook to let everyone know um, that we will not be able to do Facebook Live this evening because the function is down on Facebook. I've been trying ever since we started at 6 o'clock and it just spends and spends and then finally comes up with an error message. Uh, so I already posted a message to let everyone know on Facebook that if they want to watch the meeting, I then posted the link. Uh, so they can come in here. Unfortunately, that feature is having issues with Facebook this evening. You all will not be on there. Just so you know.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for the committee of the whole? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'll channel my question through you, the president, and then maybe you can pass it on to Law Director Howard, and I'm just going to bring it up now and in the meeting. And again, I didn't realize the packets were outside of City Hall Annex. Is the current door we're going to vote on for January 1st, 2020, is that still 20-65 or does it have a separate number to it?
Well, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to it, but I'm going to let the law director answer it.
Okay.
It will be a, a whole new ordinance. 20-65 just created the Dora that expires at the end of this calendar year. So this whole, is a whole new process, new application with a new map, with all that comments and, and discussion we had at our last meeting. So now that the administration put together the, the application, it's being submitted to council this evening. From that, you'll have an ordinance, a new ordinance with a new number, um, to approve the new application effective January 1st, 2021.
Okay, and President, the reason I ask is when I went down to City Hall recently and got a copy of the new map, if you will, it was included with ordinance 20-65. So I was totally confused until President Fote and I spoke on the phone this afternoon. He straightened me out. It took a while for me to comprehend, but I was thinking it was still going to be 20-65 with a new map and changes. And I said to myself, wait a minute, this cannot be. So that clears it up. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilman Perry.
Real quick, just wanted to compliment you on your nice looking haircut.
Thank you. I got a great barber. He's a good looking guy, too. Councilman Leopard.
Does your barber still give free hats with every haircut?
I am, no, I didn't know he did that. He's holding out on me. He's holding out on me.
Actually, I got a free pedal bike ride.
All right, anything else? Anything else for the committee of the whole? All right, uh, seeing nothing, uh, brought up, we'll adjourn the, uh, committee of whole meeting until, uh, and meet again for our regular council meeting. It's now 7 o'clock. I'll, I'd like to announce the Tiffa City Council meeting for October 19th, 2020 is now in session. Uh, this evening, Councilman Perry will lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we prove those trespasses against us. And neither is it not its salvation, but deliver us to him. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory, and the crown of heaven.
A pledge of allegiance.
Stands to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with love, mercy, and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Perry. Uh, Clerk of Council, Anne Forrest, will now call the roll, please.
Councilman Perry.
Here.
Councilman Schiff.
Here.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Here.
Councilman Gillig.
Here.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Present.
Councilman Leopard.
Here.
But the record shows all members, all seven members of the city council were present. Um, hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to read the minutes from the, uh, October 5th regular, uh, regular meeting and the committee of the whole meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions? One thing I noticed, I, we had, uh, we had, uh, on the regular meeting, we had October 21st at the heading.
Yes, I'll change, I'll change that. Thank you. It was brought to my attention. Thanks.
All right. Anything else? All right, thought objection, the minutes will be approved as presented with the one minor change. Uh, we'll move on to committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilman Gillig.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Law and Community Planning, Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to give a summary of my report from the September 29th meeting, um, that the committee had. Um, I did send out an official report via email to you all. Hopefully you all received it. Um, but to provide, to provide a brief summary, uh, the Law and Community Planning Committee meeting was held on September 29th via Zoom. In attendance were council members Bridget Boyle, Steve Leopard, Dan Perry, John Yanatuno. Additionally, Mayor Mon, City Engineer Matt Watson, Law Director Brent Howard, City Administrator Dale Thornton, as well as TSEP representatives Nick Dutrow and Amy Reinhardt were in attendance. This meeting was called to order at 5:01 PM, and the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the mayor's request for legislation number 20-38, establishing a mobile food vendor license law, as well as number 20-40, a new zoning classification R4A, as well as any other business that may come before the committee. The first topic, the first topic discussed was establishing a mobile food vendor license law. The mayor and Amy Reinhardt both provided background of this topic. Amy continued by outlining the application process, which was created by the Business Enhancement Committee. A city administrator explained the revisions the city implemented to this process, such as the requirement for a mobile food vendor permit, which would provide eligibility for a food truck to operate in the designated areas by the city. The city admin continued by explaining the purpose of the food trucks operating in these designated parking lots as opposed to allowing these vendors operating on city streets. The primary purpose of this was to ensure the safety of individuals who are supporting these vendors. Further explanation of the application and details of this process was provided by Law Director Howard. Councilman Leopard made a motion to authorize the law director to prepare an ordinance to establish a mobile food vendor license law as outlined in the documents presented and discussed in this meeting. Councilman Perry seconded the motion and the motion carried. The second order of business discussed was the mayor's request for legislation number 20-40, a new zoning classification R4A. Mayor provided an overview of this topic by stating there is an area of land that is adjacent to the city in which we would, we would like to annex. Currently, a portion of this property is already within the city limits. There are individuals on this property who raise chickens and similar animals in order for them to continue these operations and new zoning code is required. R4A identifies a multifamily and agricultural property similar to farming use. This allows certain types of animals to be raised and property on the property with a limit of the number of animals, as well as a variety of animals, which is considered animal husbandry. The primary change is, and is agriculture that is five acres or more, provided the animal and poultry husbandry is limited in numbers. Mayor continued to provide further details of the specific area of land being discussed. City Engineer Matt Watson provided background and detail as to how the zoning code was established. Primarily, this was upon his team's research in similar surrounding areas in the state that have, that have this expansion and growth in agricultural land. Additionally, Matt explained the details of the zoning classification includes the following. Any agricultural use that would be proposed on a property containing less than five acres would be considered to have a conditional approval, approval required by the city of Tiffan Planning Commission. There is a limit on the number of poultry and animals at 10 per acres with a max of 100 animals, thus eliminating any type of commercial agricultural use. Containment requirements are also included in this code, which entails any animal or agricultural use must be enclosed, contained in a structure or fenced in area. Lastly, the property owner cannot have agricultural use within 25 feet of a property line or 80 feet from the nearest dwelling. In conclusion, Councilman Perry made a motion for the law director to prepare legislation for the new zoning classification code R4A. Council Leopard's second motion and the motion carried. No further, with no further business, the committee adjourned at 5:38 PM. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Boyle. Are there any questions for, uh, Councilwoman Boyle? Councilman Schiff.
Ian said a question, as far as the, uh, food trucks go or the mobile food vendors permits, where are those designated areas? I know you said parking lots, but, um, any specific ones?
Yes, I, and city administrator, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's, uh, parking lots A and B. Is that accurate?
Parking lot six, parking lot seven, parking lot four, parking lot five, and the TSEP parking lot down by Ralph's. And there were two spaces, A and B, in each of those lots.
Got it.
That permit yearly or you pay it once and that's how that works?
You can get a permit for up to, uh, one month at a time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Councilwoman Boyle. Materials and equipment, Councilman Jones.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilman Perry.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation of Public Property, Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. A meeting was held via Zoom on October 14th, 2020, starting at 4:00 PM. Its purpose was to discuss the acquisition of property at 43 West Market Street and any other business to come before the committee. Attending were committee members, myself, Ken Jones, and Dan Perry. Also in attendance were City Administrator Dale Thornton, Law Director Brent Howard, David Zach and Nick Dutrow from TSEP, and Nicole Wallby from the Advertiser Tribune. In May of 2018, TSEP purchased the property at 43 West Market Street for $35,000. This property's home was in poor condition and adjacent to property owned by TSEP, a 501(c)(3). In August of 2018, TSEP donated land to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation, who also called the Land Bank, so that the Land Bank could use its resources from the state to demolish the house, removing blight from the area. To comply with rules from the Land Bank, the property will be returned to the city of Tiffin. In turn, the city of Tiffin will return the property to TSEP for economic development. Councilman Jones asked several questions for clarification and then motion for the law director to create legislation for the acquisition and transfer a property back to TSEP. Councilman Perry seconded the motion. The motion carried on a vote of three to zero. With no further action needed at this time and no other committee business to discuss, meeting adjourned at 4:08 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Yanatuno. Are there any questions for the Councilwoman? Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Street sidewalk and sewer committee meeting was held Thursday, October the 8th, 2020 via Zoom webinar. Tending were committee members State Leopard, Don Yanatuno, and Ken Jones, along with City Administrator Dale Thornton, City Engineer Matt Watson, Law Director Brent Howard, and TSEP Development Manager Nick Dutrow. I've recalled the meeting to order at 4:02 PM and stated the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the mayor's request for legislation 20-41, an additional perpetual easement to obtain an additional five foot easement and right of way for public road and highway purposes, including but not limited to all incidental, incidental purposes such as roadside walks, public utilities, drainage ditches, and other facilities along Tyber Road and Shawan Avenue. Engineer Watson explained to the committee that during the review of the 2021 road improvement project for Shawan Avenue that has already been approved, right of way was not sufficient for public improvement. Shawan Avenue will be widened as there will be truck access from Shawan. Engineer Watson reported that of sidewalks, wherever extended and improvements made, that the five foot would be necessary to complete the project. Currently sidewalks are in place along Tyber Road. Committee member Yanatuno asked if ownership issues are a concern. Engineer Watson stated the property owner agreed to provide an easement. Committee member Jones questioned if five foot easement was enough. Engineer Watson reported the five foot request was sufficient, and the bidding process will begin after the first of the new year, new year, once the 2021 budget is in place. and the bidding process will begin after the first of the new year, new year, once the 2021 budget is in place. Engineer Watson informed the committee that the current right-of-way on Shawan Avenue is 50-foot and Tyber Road is 60-foot, insisting a 30-foot on each side of the center line of the road. Law Director Howard stated that we must balance the needs of the property owner along with the city for current and future improvements. Committee member Yannatuno introduced the motion to authorize Law Director to prepare legislation to approve the RFL for perpetual easement, as stated in the request. Committee member Jones seconded the motion. The motion was approved by a three-to-zero vote. With no further business presented to the committee, the meeting adjourned at 4:16 PM.
Thanks, Councilman Leopard. Are there any questions for Councilman Leopard? Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilman Schuff.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anyone see a need for a committee of the whole meeting? All right, we'll move on to reports of the officers. And it's great to see him up and about. We're glad to have him here with us this evening. His honor, Mayor Aaron D. Montz.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a pleasure to be back to the office today. I appreciate all of you with your assistance and all the department heads, and especially City Administrator Dale Thornton for his leadership while I was gone. Due to the fact that I was not here for much time at all, my report is very short and sweet, so most of my time this evening will be given to the Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership. David Zach and his team are going to present their quarterly update to city council this evening for most of my time. I do want to let everyone know that we're continuing to keep a handle on the financial situation here at the city because Tiffin, just like most other communities across the country, has been significantly impacted by coronavirus. Where we are at right now, it's still up in the air where we're going to finish the year. We are still down since the beginning of the pandemic. We had, we're not able to send out the reports daily now because we are down two people in the income tax department currently. So Kathy has her hands full, so those reports will not come out daily. For the next few days, you'll get an update once we have a little bit better information. Regardless, we know that we've been affected by it, having a, missing out on a few days of financial updates. It's not going to be the end of the world, but as soon as those folks return in income tax and are able to get all the deposits, deposits posted, you will start receiving those updates daily on financial status again. David and his team will probably touch it, but I'm very pleased to see that we have 47 approved applications for the Tiffin, Tiffin Care Small Business Relief Grant Program. That was not enough to exhaust all of the money. However, there are many applications that are still pending that have until tomorrow to get those applications finalized or fixed if there were errors on them. So we will provide an update at the next council meeting and exactly how many of those applications were funded and how much, if any, money remains, but 47 already approved and are ready for funding. So very happy to see a lot of our local businesses taking care of the, or taking advantage of these grant dollars to help them survive throughout the coronavirus pandemic. I also want to congratulate Dr. Sears on the announcement that went out this morning of his new office. That is another development out on Progress Parkway and Fair Lane out near the New Willows Development. So we have our second business now located out there since the new road was installed. It's great to see the progress continuing. It's night, would have been nice to see if we would have had additional development had we not run smack dab into this pandemic wall this year. Then I also want to issue a huge thank you and, or huge congratulations to the Tiffin-Columbian tornadoes on their playoff win last Friday. It's very nice to see that. They brought home the victory. Congratulations, Coach Lutz and the team. Really proud of all of you. Two reminders for everyone, Trick or Treat is coming up on Sunday, October the 25th, from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM. And then also just a reminder, early voting has begun. So to avoid the long crowded polling places on election day, we encourage folks to vote early if you have that opportunity. Get it done and out of the way in case you do come down with coronavirus or any other sickness. Hate to miss your opportunity. It's a big election year for, for this country and encourage folks to vote early if they are able to do so. Other than that, we began budget hearings today with department heads. So we will have information back to city council in the very near future with budget projections for 2021 so that we can hold a hearing or two with all of you to begin the process of finalizing the 2021 budget here at the city. So with that, if there are any questions or comments for me, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I'll turn it over to David and his team.
Any questions for the mayor? I don't see any.
Okay, well, with that, David Zach, I'm going to bring you, promote you to a panelist now so that David was president CEO of the Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership. We'll be coming in here to him and his team provide their quarterly update, so. It's like, here he comes. And David, you just tell me when you need someone else brought in.
Okay, perfect. If you could bring on Carol Kern to start, and I'll give some introduction as you're doing that. She's also calling in for the audio. So it's a, the last, the last four numbers of her number are 3041.
Got it.
You can see that number. That would be great. Okay, there she is. Perfect. Okay, I want to thank city council and the city administration for allowing us to give you an update. We consider being able to do what we do as your economic downtown and community development agent an honor and a privilege, and it's, it's exciting every day to get up for work and make this a better place for the people that live here, people that study here, the people that visit here, and the people that work here. So I'm excited to have the team talk about what happened in the third quarter. This is our third quarter update. We did send out a couple of weeks back our quarterly report. If you did not receive that, ping me afterwards and we'll make sure you get that. So without further ado, I'm going to turn the talking stick over to Carol Kern, Business Services Coordinator with the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, Ohio means Job-Seneca County, to talk about what we did in workforce over the, in the third quarter. So with that, Carol, take it away.
Okay, thanks, David. Good evening. There has been a lot of activity in the workforce area, and I want to give you some of the highlights. The 4CG is the collaborative effort of Huron, Ottawa, Sandusky, and Seneca County to promote workforce growth in our four counties.
Oh, Carol, Carol, can you hold on? I just realized the screen isn't being shared, so can I do screen sharing? Says it's disabled. Can I do that?
I can, but I will have to make you the host of the meeting, David.
I promise to give it back, Mayor.
Please do, because if you hit end, you shut our whole meeting down and I can't restart it, so.
I will not. That's honor, and I was, I was a Cub Scout.
Let me find you on here, David.
Okay. Okay, I'll try not to let it go to my head. Let's see here. Okay. Okay, there we go. Okay. And. Okay. Can you see it? Looks like. Mayor, is that good?
Yep, we see it. Thank you.
Yeah, because I was moving things forward. Okay, so with that, Carol, go right ahead.
Okay, back to the four counties.
Yeah.
Again, the collaborative effort of Huron, Ottawa, Sandusky, and Seneca Counties to promote workforce growth in our counties. Our plan was finalized and released, released at the end of June, and the counties have continued to meet to discuss initiatives. Our first project is to create videos to promote the area to keep youth here and to get youth to return. We're starting, we'll be starting within the next couple of weeks, and youth will be selected to create TikTok videos of themselves doing fun things in the four counties. That's just the first, and then we'll move on to older youth in the next section. Jobs for the Future awarded a grant to the Tiffin City Schools to implement Northwest Career Ready with the goal of expanding work-based learning opportunities. The implementation slowed down somewhat due to COVID-19, but the subcommittees continue to meet to establish goals. The Communication Committee will now become more active and will start to promote the project. David's starting to send out regular promotions about the event, and then I'm also on the, on that committee with him. The Manufacturing Showcase normally would have been held the second Friday in October, but this year there will be virtual events in each of the schools during the month of March. Employers will talk about their facility, will perform an activity for the students, then the students will also be able to do one of the activities. While we'd all hoped to have an in-person event, the committee is glad the schools didn't want to cancel completely and agree to this alternate idea. Another thing put on hold were the employer videos. We hope to start those again soon, but a timeline hasn't been established. The Tiffin City Schools Business Advisory Council met last Thursday, at which time new bylaws were approved at Calvert to the group. The other main topic of discussion was subcommittees. Six have been created. They will all have meetings and will share reports at the next advisory council meeting in November. And the Jobs Seneca County Facebook continues, and there'll be some more stats on the next slide. Okay, the page was launched just a little over a year ago. 1,938 followers, actually, as of this morning, we're up to 1,943. Over the course of, since January, we've had 2,164 posts, 660,000 impressions. And we do still have the employer videos posted on there. They are still getting views, and there's a list of the five videos that are available on that Jobs Seneca County Facebook page. As far as posts on Ohio means jobs, so far this year we had 118 posts. Eleven of those were for employers who were using their services for the first time. Income worker training, which reimburses employers 50% of the cost of training their workforce. So far, I've obligated over 41,000 for training of 55 employees. And also this year, we've paid 7,000 for five youth to be in a work experience with a local employer. Are there any questions for me?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Mayor or whoever's controlling it, if you could let Audrey Flood on.
Guess what, David? You're controlling it.
Oh, all right, okay.
You know how to do this? If you find Audrey, David, if you find Audrey under the attending.
I got you. Yep.
Yep.
Got you.
And then promote to panelist on her name.
Got it. Wow, you guys trust me a lot. I feel honored. Okay, Audrey, are you in? Yep, looks like.
Yes, can you hear me?
There you are. Perfect.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us on tonight. I'll jump right in to start with rural development. So as you know, I continue to go around and meet with all of the townships and villages in our county, just periodically rotating around when possible, continuing to grow those relationships, give information, educate them on what TSEP can do for the rural townships and villages as far as economic development and gathering the countywide priorities for development as well. The next thing would be the Rural Digest Newsletter. I've been continuing to build up that outreach resource for the rest of the county. If anyone would like to be added to that Rural Digest mailing list, please let me know. Reach out. Moving on to outreach and insight, so I continue to do a lot of inside or check-in calls with all the rural businesses. And we also, as I did that check-in over quarter three, we, we were able to deliver many PPE kits, free, free kits from Jobs Ohio to both rural businesses and businesses within the city of Tiffin. So that was a nice note for quarter three that we completed. I'm continuing to connect with more businesses. The more outreach I do, the more I connect with rural projects that are happening across the county. So that is going quite well. That project number is growing and it's going, it's very exciting. We also, the Chamber and I are working together to do, you know, more promotion of rural stories and kind of spotlight more rural businesses than ever before, so that's been a great partnership as well. Moving on to some rural projects. In quarter three, we had Hofbauer Demolition and Dumpster Rental do a large investment and expansion. That's in McCutcheonsville in Seneca Township. Buck IT also announced a, an expansion of a business reaching throughout the county, and they were able to also install those charging stations at the county building. Just last week, we had an announcement with Lane of Dreams Farm LLC. They did a grand reopening, and they have a new business model that they are expanding and kind of providing some different services as before, so that was a very exciting rural announcement. And there are about 30 to 40 other rural projects active at the moment that are not yet announced or are still in the works, so great pipeline of small rural business projects out there. Moving on to entrepreneurship and small business. So the first thing would be the Entrepreneurship Committee. So this committee was begun at the, at the beginning of the year, kind of took a little break during the height of COVID shutdown, and we relaunched the committee in August. We're now meeting monthly, and the main goal of the committee is to guide our strategic planning effort. So we are creating a plan that will guide our next steps and where we invest our time and resources as far as supporting our entrepreneurs here in Tiffin and Seneca County. And that committee is helping us guide that work in partnership with some staff at the Great Lakes Community Action Partnership, as they have a grant to, to support rural entrepreneurship. And rural, in this case, does include the city of Tiffin because of the size of our community. So we're very excited to have those partners and access to their resources as we have launched into the strategic planning effort. Another update for you would be the CEO program. This is a project we've been working on for about a year and a half now. This was also announced during quarter three to the public. So CEO stands for Creating Entrepreneurial Opportunities. We have many partners that have helped us launch into this program to bring it here to Ohio. Some of the leaders of this would include North Central Electric, Sutton Bank, Bass Communications, local school leaders. And again, this program is about reaching out to high school students for an entrepreneurship-led type of education that is outside of the classroom, not done with a textbook, but learning from our community business leaders, hands-on and directly from them. So it's a very exciting opportunity. There are over 58 other programs throughout the country, but we, Tiffin and Seneca County will be the first one in the state of Ohio. So we're very excited to announce this opportunity. We're also actively recruiting, recruiting investors and community support right now. If this entrepreneurship program for high schoolers sounds like something that you would be interested in, please reach out to me, and I'm happy to see how we can get you involved, either with time, talent, or resources. That program is looking to launch in the fall of 2021. There's lots of momentum. We're moving very quickly. And that was kind of a real high view overview, so I'm happy to dive into any questions you might have if you reach out to me on that. Also, in small business, as far as COVID and resources, been assisting David with the Tiffin Cares and Seneca Cares programs, which I'm sure he will discuss more about. But that is a process as well. Moving on to community development. So the CDPG program that TSEP runs on behalf of the city of Tiffin, I am still supporting for the 2018 grant cycle, which was Riverview Park, which you all will remember was completed earlier this year in 2020. And we also are continuing to manage the Nature Trails Park project, which was the 2020 community development project. So I'm continuing to learn and manage the CDPG process, reporting and project facilitation there for you all at the city. For other grants and projects, in quarter three, Jefferson Street wrapped up, which I was able to help facilitate through an ODNR grant on behalf of the city, so that was a great success. Also, in quarter three, we had a YMCA playground project completed, which turned out to be a rather, rather large project and a great collaboration between a lot of local partners, including our local Lowe's and their Heroes program. We had Tiffin Community Foundation and Gilmore Foundation both helped to fund the gap in that project. And then we also had some labor and some equipment rental from both the Tiffin-Columbian Football and Webster Industries. So that was a really great broad collaboration that happened within the city of Tiffin from all kinds of different partners that was fun to facilitate. Next thing would be the Tiffin Community Development Committee. This committee is helping us to implement the new PIP process, which stands for Project Identification and Prioritization Process. Those are a lot of words, but that is what is connected to our Dream Big initiative that David and I came on specifically to talk to you about just a little bit ago. So this is asking the community again to submit those project ideas and project proposals so that we can annually evaluate what the priorities of the community are and then help to facilitate the completion of those top-ranked projects. Hopefully, that sounds familiar. We're currently doing a lot of outreach using everything from print to radio to personal outreach to try to get the word out about this and to try to get projects submitted from across the community. So again, help us spread the word about that. And again, the, the point of this is just to really encourage citizens, as well as organizations and elected officials, to really dream big about what, what Tiffin could be and what changes, improvements, and, you know, additions they would like to see in their community, so. and, you know, additions they would like to see in their community. So please reach out for more about that. The window to submit those projects does close on November 12th, so there's still a bit of time left to be able to submit things. We currently have over twenty ideas submitted and six to seven major projects in the works that are submitting for prioritization through that process. One other initiative I'd like to mention is the Seneca County Common Ground Initiative, which is the nonprofit that we started last year that's now running the farmers market. We are wrapping up the farmers market season this Saturday. Our organization was able to more than triple the size of the market. We grew in number of customers, number of vendors. And despite having to move due to the wonderful Jefferson Street project in the middle of the season, we were still able to have all of that growth. That organization also allows us to, we just announced in quarter three, the Community Kitchen Project, which I know the mayor has mentioned before, but that'll be, I've been heavily involved in that process as well. And that will be the kitchen that will allow things like cooking classes, local food education, local partnerships between our growers and our food businesses here in town and all kinds of opportunities for partnership and growth within that Community Kitchen Project. Again, happy to talk more about that if you'd like to reach out. And our other administrative duties, as usual, social media, supporting downtown initiatives, financial organizational. If you have any questions about the rest of those initiatives, please let me know.
Thank you, Audrey. Any questions for Audrey at this time? All right, thank you very much. And getting, I'm learning how to do this here. This is fantastic. Okay. Okay, get Nick online. Should be coming on. Nick or either. I promoted him to panelist.
I am, thank you.
Okay, fantastic. All right, Nick, take it away.
Thank you, and thanks again for having us all on today. I will start with some announcements. As the mayor has mentioned, we announced today that Dr. Chris Sears will be building a new office near the Willows at Tiffin, which is very exciting. And last week, we helped with Five Star Maintenance to announce that they've moved to a new building at the Airport Industrial Park. In the last quarter, we've had a number of high-profile industrial announcements. Durrell Home is investing more than three million dollars and it's playing in Tiffin, adding eighty-seven new jobs. As council knows, you help to incentivize them on that program. American Plastics announced that they are, have invested, excuse me, seven million dollars in their operations, also in the Airport Industrial Park. Webster Industries invested three million in new machinery and equipment. And Arnold Machine acquired a division of Finley Machine and Tool. All great announcements, very excited for all of these things, and hopefully there's more announcements coming up very soon, a number of projects I'm working on in the industrial and commercial sector. Moving on to initiatives outside of the projects we've been working on. First, we are in the midst of our reach out to companies, both as TSEP, as our, as our organization, but also with representatives of Jobs Ohio and Regional Growth Partnership Northwest Ohio. Those meetings are being done both in person and using technology like this, which is a great tool for us to reach out to many of our companies here in both of those ways. Following the release of the housing study last year, TSEP has been engaged with a number of developers on residential projects. In September, we helped to announce that ICE Developments plan to build forty-eight condo units at three locations in Tiffin, which we're very excited about, and hopefully more residential is, is on the way as well. A few months ago, David and I helped to reconvene the Economic Development Committee. There's a number of folks involved with the city who are also on that committee, the mayor, some others as well. Already, the group has been coming up with ideas for industrial development and the need for planning. Recently, three sites located on the short line rail were identified as potential development are being marketed by our partners at OmniTrax. And then additionally, I recently finished the submission of the city's forty-acre lot on Mall Road for the Jobs Ohio Site Ohio Program to better position it as a development-ready site. So in addition to all of these, I will add as well, I continue to work on obtaining my Ohio Certified Economic Development Professional Status. Just completed all the core courses through the Ohio Economic Development Institute and have registered for the Capstone Course, which is really the last step on our way there. Moving on, finally, communications and media continue to be especially busy. I think we've been busy with this since the start of COVID through now. Luckily though, most of what we're talking about now are some great announcements. Thus far in 2020, I've sent out sixty-two press releases as TSEP. We've sent out twenty-two releases for the city of Tiffin as per our contract that we have with the city. These have resulted in a hundred and seventy-six stories in print and digital media and twenty-four news segments, all very exciting how much regional attention our stories have been getting lately. As well as traditional media outreach, I've also sent out five Development Digest since we started these new email newsletters, which reach a great number of people. Very excited to have that additional communication going out. And with that, that is everything I have. Any questions for me?
All right, thank you so much, Nick.
Thank you.
Great job. Okay, with that, we'll hand it over to Amy Reinhardt, who I'm hoping Amy is on.
I am.
Okay, take it away, Amy.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. So in quarter three, we actually had two new small businesses open downtown, Kessler and Co., which is a new boutique, and Amada Mortgage. Believe it or not, during the course of the year, we've actually had eight total new businesses open downtown. We have a number of great projects happening right now. Happy Waters doing a renovation project. Ninety-two South Washington is a complete renovation of the entire building. We've got the Bears Den project outside. There's also a number of additional projects. When we say there's fifty downtown projects, we're looking at infrastructure, we're looking at building, we're looking at working with young entrepreneurs, bringing new business in. It's, it's quite a large gamut of things that we have going on downtown right now. You can go on, David. Some of the initiatives that we are working on this year, of course, the DORA, as you're all very much aware. This has been instrumental in helping our downtown bars and restaurants. We are seeing a number of those bars and restaurants reporting a twenty-five to fifty percent increase in revenue. Unfortunately, they still have reduced seating inside their businesses, and they are not realizing their true income capacity at this time. So the DORA is helping to supplement that. This does allow people to go in, purchase a beverage and a meal, and go sit outside on our picnic tables and enjoy the family and enjoy the nice weather. So again, it is a big asset to those businesses, but it's also assisting our retail downtown because they are actually able to receive some of the additional foot traffic that's going on downtown as a result of the DORA. Food truck policy, as mentioned earlier this evening by Bridgette, this was something the Business Enhancement Committee did work on. They spent a significant amount of time looking at other communities, benchmarking best practices, looking at overall costs of the policy and other communities, and were able to present their ideas to the city in May. And of course, then the city did their final adjustments, and that is now going through council. So we're very pleased to have been part of that process. The downtown picnic tables, we do right now have twenty-six picnic tables downtown from the parks, but those will be going back at the end of the season. We are very pleased to have received a seven thousand dollar grant from the White Family Fund at the Tiffin Community Foundation. That in conjunction with a donation from a downtown business, we're actually able to purchase nine permanent picnic tables that will be placed downtown. Additionally, we had a generous donor donate ten bike racks in the downtown, and those were actually installed just a couple weeks ago. So if you go around downtown, you will see those. And the plaques are completed. Those will be getting installed in the next few weeks, and all the bike racks will be dedicated to Bunky. Finally, we were part of the Heritage Ohio Pitch Party. So Heritage Ohio is the organization that oversees Main Street for the state, and they had their annual conference at the end of last month. And we were one of the communities chosen to pitch an idea. And we pitched cigarette containers. Unfortunately, when we go downtown and do our downtown cleanups, about eighty to ninety percent of what we're picking up is unfortunately not trash, but it is cigarettes. With the pitch party, we were able to receive votes, and each one of our votes was a dollar donation. So we received six hundred and sixty-five dollars from the pitch, and we will be able to purchase six containers for the downtown businesses. So far, five of them have been claimed, and those will be installed and maintained by the businesses themselves. You can go on. And media. As Nick mentioned, we have gotten a lot of traction from both WTOL and the local newspaper. We are getting great stories, coverage on things like the DORA, coverage of our businesses, coverage of the work that we did during the shutdown with the auction of firsts. So that has been fantastic. We were actually recognized in the summer 2020 issue of Revitalize Ohio for the work that this entire community was doing during the shutdown. Haley from Small Town Charm came and did a little hype video on the great things that are happening downtown. North Coast Business Journal last month highlighted the downtown facade projects. And believe it or not, we had a production company from Cleveland come in and do a hype video on Sony TV. So hopefully that will be coming out soon. You can go on, David. And last, on the thirtieth of September, we had our annual summit for downtown. We were able to celebrate the great things that we have going on this year. Believe it or not, there are so many great things. We had our local awards. Joyce Barrett, the executive director of Heritage Ohio, did present as well as I. And we were so fortunate to have received two more state awards this year. The first one for us, for Historic Farm State of the Year with Winterberry Farm. I know that's not downtown, but it is a historic preservation project and a revitalization. It was well-deserved and a beautiful project. Secondly, was Best Downtown Place Making for the State, and that went to the Frost County Amphitheater in East Greenat National Corner. So a number of great projects that received state recognition again this year. So we're very proud of the work that this community does. You know, beyond that, we've got, we actually are starting to get some events going in the community. This coming weekend, as Audrey mentioned, we have the farmers market, but in conjunction with that will be the downtown garage sales. And upcoming on November seventh is the scavenger hunt, and keep your eyes open for holiday events. There will be some holiday events taking place downtown. So unless anyone has any questions, I thank you.
Any questions for Amy? Okay, thank you, Amy. Okay, I'll take us, take us home. You know, when I think about the third quarter results in the context of the coronavirus pandemic, it's incredibly inspiring and I think a testament to our community. Twenty announcements in the third quarter, really incredible. Bunch of new businesses, huge investments, and the year is going well, and things are cooking, whether it's downtown, whether it's retail, whether it's commercial, whether it's industrial. So we're excited about what took place in the third quarter, and even more so that that's really an indication that the Tiffin-Seneca economy is getting back on track. So if we look at the number of projects so far through the first three quarters of the year, we obviously know these, these aren't net numbers. So certainly we know some of the jobs that have been lost by companies, so really want to contextualize what you see here. But a hundred and sixty-six projects for the, for Tiffin and Seneca County, and that's everything from somebody doing a facade to the company, the demolition company that Audrey talked about, to model mortgage, to you know, the, the larger industrial projects as Nick's talking about. Three hundred and sixty new jobs won, almost five thousand jobs connected with those companies, eighty-two million dollars new investment, and almost two million dollars worth of assistance that we've helped facilitate so far this year. So super great numbers. We, we know that numbers only tell part of the story, but they're, they're positive. So this is a pipeline, a description of our pipeline from our customer relationship management system. You can see there that, you know, we have a large number of projects in the pipeline. And it's pretty, pretty clear to see that you got like about fifty-eight projects right now in the pipeline. These are active projects in downtown. An additional fifty, fifty-two, fifty-three in, in Tiffin proper. So you're talking about more than a hundred active projects in the city of Tiffin right now, that, that is, that we're tracking, facilitating, helping to work on, or getting ready to announce. So when our pipeline is robust, that usually bodes really well for what's coming in the future. We don't, obviously, as a community, win every project that's in our pipeline, but usually a significant portion of those do. So good, good numbers. And if you look at it, it breaks down by type, most of those, as it, as Rich will tell you, and any economic developer will tell you, it's always the existing companies that are the largest contributors in terms of new job growth and new investment in a community, and that's no exception here. What is neat is that you have a lot of real estate development. So you get a lot of people just, you know, whether it's downtown fixing up a building or, you know, we've had real estate projects where people just are investing. A lot of new startup businesses, so, and a lot of business getting workforce development assistance through Carol. So it's kind of a quick look at what those, you know, kind of numbers mean. Recap that, you know, what were we trying to work on? What did we tell you? We were going to work on when the second quarter ended, and we, we gave you an update last time. We were going to work on our business and retention and expansion, our outreach. We're going to focus on some planning efforts. We were going to work on executing our communication and marketing strategy. And we were going to work on solving the real estate challenge. And I think we've, we've done all this, I think, in the connect intentionally area. Carol Kern helped us secure a grant that's, has helped us get a complete, fresh, new database of all businesses. In addition, we've procured the services of, of a company in Toledo, CoAct, which is going to help us do additional outreach than we can just do ourselves to continually target getting hundreds and hundreds of more businesses. We're, we're caught, we probably talked about three hundred or so far this year, and they're going to help us get, get some more into 2021. So that's exciting. I'll talk about planning efforts in a second. Our communication and marketing strategy in the third quarter, we launched all of our new newsletters. So that's the Rural Digest, the Workforce Digest, and the Development Digest, the Downtown Digest, which was formerly Downtown Times, was always rolling. But we're excited to have executed that and continue to work on building those, the base of subscribers and solving the real estate challenge. So that's really been industrial land and spec building through the Economic Development Committee. And I will, you know, mention that sometimes you'll hear about, I was doing professional development. Nick talked about his Capstone course. Well, Nick's Capstone project is to help get industrial land and spec build another one in, in town. So when we do professional development, it's very practical, and so I really appreciate Nick taking that on. That's what he chose to do because he understands its importance. So planning efforts were front and center for the third quarter. We've started our annual planning process for this organization. The downtown planning process is already concluded. So we talked about a day-long trip to another community, and it was great to go out to Medina. And we also then did separately a strategic planning scope of work was developed. And for TSEP, we just sent out our member survey. We've about concluded that, got our results, and looking forward the fourth Wednesday this month of having our annual strategic retreat for the board. So everything's going really well there. If you haven't filled it out, council people, I know a number have, please do so. In terms of economic and workforce development, we, we are working on and have selected somebody when we're in a financial and bandwidth position. Do we expect in 2021, we're going to work on getting a new comprehensive economic development strategy done. Rich did the last one, so it were due. Carol Kern was our representative on a two-county, four-county effort, I call the Four CG, which ended up with a workforce and economic development strategy. There's a lot of good nuggets in there. And then also, Carol mentioned the Northwest Career Ready Initiative. So a lot of planning's going on. They finished their first year, coming into the second year of a multi-year effort. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant program that's, that's in multiple states in the country, successful in helping kids become career-ready, which is obviously going to be a big boon in the economic development. For the first time ever, we have really what I consider to be a, a, a strong community engagement, much stronger now that we have the staff in place and the process in place that we stole from Dayton and adapted the project identification prioritization process. We've talked about this. Audrey gave you the numbers, twenty project ideas, six to nine, and, and being developed for actual project submissions. We're going to be doing that every year, and then we're going to be soon, after November 12th, we're going to be putting them online so the public can view what we're looking at, provide feedback. So it's exciting, stuff we haven't done before. And then on the entrepreneurship, also something, for the first time, we're looking to have a entrepreneurship strategic plan that's getting funded by a grant being facilitated by the Great Lakes Community Action Partnership. I'm really pleased with Audrey's leadership there and what that group's doing, and that's going to take us at least a year. We're all of 2021, we're going to be focused on that while we're doing other entrepreneurship activities. And then last but not least, we concluded the policy development work, and we do, we are now implementing, we talked about those recommendations. So I have a draft RFP process, which I hope to get to city council very soon. I already ran it by Craig Gossman. We've talked about it. So we'll be presenting that to the city administration very soon as a tool in the toolbox, and we continue to work on the policy development recommendations. So last slide, coming in, you know, what are we going to focus on for fourth quarter? Well, we talked about CoAct, so getting a list together of who they're going to target, and getting that launch is a big, in addition to everything else we're working on, a big initiative, I want to make sure that happens. The Cares Business Relief Grant Program, mayor talked about it. I mentioned the forty-seven that have been awarded funding. We got another thirteen that were We got another 13 that we're trying to bring across the finish line by this Wednesday. Another two that are still yet have a couple of things. So we're hoping to get that wrapped up pretty quick in terms of being able to get our grant agreements and being able to disperse funds. We have gone above and beyond reaching out, calling people by phone, helping them if they come in to scan things and do whatever we can to make it as easy as possible for people that don't understand what's a W9 or this. We're really working hard to make it as easy as possible. We want everybody to take advantage who has thrown their hat in the ring to get some of the support. Businesses can need all the support they can get. And then workplace innovation, we've been in the third quarter, we spent a lot of time, how can we become more efficient with what we do? And how can we innovate within our work environment to become more and more effective? And we've come up with more than 20 specific ways to make that happen, including we, we touch base, this is something one of our team members came up with, you know, every 9:15, 9:30, we all kind of gather and we kind of share what's going on. And that keeps kind of the coffee hour very, very kind of tight. And then we're working very hard on the other time. So it allows us to connect as a team, but it's very structured and then we can work throughout the day. So little things like that, you start getting a 20, 30 ideas like that, very, very succinct, how we do our minutes. Our minutes have gone from kind of a sports analogy, a play by play to here's the scoreboard. These are where the motions and this is where the next steps are. That saves us a ton of time, gets the essential information that people need, but also saves us time so we can invest that time into other initiatives. So super excited about the third quarter, really excited about the fourth quarter and super excited to be in a community where, wow, the economy's going, the, the businesses are still struggling, but they are doing amazing things and we're, we're thrilled about it. Any questions for me or anybody else on the team that you want me to bring up? Okay, I'm going to make the mayor the host.
David? Do you have any idea when, when the checks will be going out for the CARES funding?
So the timing, Rich, is 10 days from the time we have a signed grant agreement is our estimate. So we're going to have the grant agreements out this week. Of course, it depends how quickly the businesses turn that around. They have to fill out an ACH form and get us the ACH form so we can, you know, electronically disperse it in their accounts because we're not cutting checks. And then we have to have a signed grant agreement. And once we have those, we're estimating 10 days. There are some limits per day. You can only get $60,000 out per day, but we're going to work hard to get, to get it out relatively quickly. Thanks. Yep. Okay. I am going to mayor try to make you the host. And let me see. I'm trying to do that. Is it working? Shut down the shared screen. Let's see here, give me a second. Okay, so, okay, now it's, yes, I do want to make the mayor the host. Okay, mayor, I've turned it back over to you without canceling the meeting, so.
All right, thanks, David.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, mayor?
No, that concludes my report. If anyone's thought of any questions in the meantime, they're welcome to answer them.
Councilman Jones.
I have a question. It's not specifically for the mayor, but I wanted to bring it up sometime. I did drive by the parking lot at Seneca County Commissioners. I saw one of the electric, electric charging machines set up, but I didn't see the second one. Is it located somewhere else or it's coming in the future? I'm just curious about the second charging station.
Those chargers in the commissioners lot are the county commissioners. They're regular chargers. They're not the super fast chargers like what we are doing. So ours are going in lot seven down by Simply Susan's in the Board of Elections. The other ones are just the counties that they install.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor. Next, Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to report that on October 8th of this year, I received from the Seneca County Commissioner's Office an annexation petition and the Commissioner's Resolution accepting the petition for the annexation of approximately 9.798 acres of land along Euclid Avenue and Hope County, owned by R&amp;L Zeiss Family Limited Partnership III LLC and others. That'll be on hold in my office.
Thank you. Any questions for Clerk of Court, Clerk of Council? Thanks, Ann. Director Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. One item I don't think has been announced, but should be in the record that the Tiffin City Council did receive the Dora application from the administration. And so it is on file now. That starts some time periods for the, the Dora process. Mayor, did I miss something or were you going to announce that at a different time?
No, I submitted the packet, so no, I apologize if I, if you were expecting me to say anything. I just.
No, 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 you're quite all right. I just wanted to make sure that it's a part of the record that shows that the, the city council did receive the, the Dora application.
Thanks, Law Director.
Thank you. Second item, there's a charter review commission meeting on October the 27th at 6 o'clock. It's via Zoom. The Zoom instructions, I believe, will be published in the newspaper. The newspaper has, has those. If anyone needs those, you can contact the mayor's office or myself to participate. Article three and article four and which involve council and the legislative process will be discussed. Possibly they will move into article five, which I believe is regarding the mayor. So you're all invited to attend and the public's invited to also attend that meeting. You'll see in your packet tonight that there is the ordinance involving the zoning of the Zeiss and other property that was presented for annexation. I wanted to explain the, the process and remind council members of the process that you must follow for an annexation. As reported by the clerk, the annexation of the, the Zeiss property that's along Euclid Avenue was presented to city council. Now by state law, that has to sit for 60 days before then the clerk will present that, lay that in front as the language, lay it in front of council. And that will be at your meeting in, in December. It will be the second meeting in December of the, at the 21st of December. And at that time, you will consider whether to accept that, the property for annexation. At the same time, it's been the custom that running parallel with that process, you can start the zoning of that property so that, and as you know, that that's a, at least a two-month process. So that by the time that we work through the, the legislative process for the zoning, that ordinance may be ready for consideration also at the same meeting in December. So at that meeting in December on the 21st, you could both accept the property for annexation and also zone it. And then that means that the property would be under the jurisdiction of the, the city zoning code and the, the zoning inspector of the city. Any questions about the annexation zoning process?
The, Law Director, the, the Planning Commission, they'll meet to discuss the zoning issue? They don't have anything to do with the annexation?
That is correct, yes. Yeah, in accordance with the city charter, after that, the ordinance 20-110 is introduced this evening. It'll need to be tabled and there'll be that joint hearing with the Planning Commission that the charter requires, and it cannot be any earlier than 15 days. So that your next regular meeting following 15 days would be November the 16th. And at that time, the, the hearing is regarding zoning of the property, not the annexation of the property. That is purely a, the annexation is purely a city council consideration.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
I have a, I thought about this. I've been meaning to bring it up. Did we ever get a response back from the governor's office or from our representative's office on the resolution that we sent concerning keeping the economy open?
I did not receive anything. I don't know if the clerk.
No, I did not receive a response either. Nothing.
Interesting.
Neither did I.
Thank you. Councilman Perry.
Yeah, I just had a question regarding, Councilman Schuff brought up the cups and the application for Dora is already in. Is it too late to change that design or change the cups at, at this point?
Law Director.
Yeah, to answer, no, the, the cup, particular design of the cup is not contained in the zoning application. That's a matter that by your ordinance would be delegated to the city administrator. But you can clearly provide input into the cup design so that by the time you vote on the, the matter, it is ready to be presented to the Ohio Division Liquid Control Department of Public Safety. But it is not a part, specifically a part of the application. So it can be worked on here in the next couple of weeks.
And I'd like to add the Councilman Schuff's Economic Development Downtown Planning Committee is going to be meeting to discuss that and the game plan for that. Anything else for the Law Director? We're now under written communications.
There are no written communications, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are we able to hear oral communications, mayor?
Yes, if there are any.
Okay, we're now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council, may please raise their hand and direct your questions to the president of city council, please. Do we have anyone?
I don't see any hands. Those watching from home, there's a button that says raise hand if you would like to address council. You need to click it at this time, please. I don't see anything, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to, we have any motions? I didn't hear any of them. Okay. We'll move on to resolutions. Any resolutions?
There are no resolutions, Mr. President.
Okay. We'll move on to ordinances.
Ordinance number 20-95, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing installment of a street light on South River Road and declaring an emergency.
This is third reading, ordinance 20-95. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage, ordinance number 20-95.
We have a motion to pass ordinance 20-95. Is there a second, Councilman Schuff?
Yes, I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero and now vote on the passage.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Perry, I'm sorry, and Leopard.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-95 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-96, introduced by Dawn Yanatuno. Ordinance amending chapter 163 and section 931.16C of Tiffin Codified Ordinances to update the city's laws related to the commission that assists the city and community regarding tree planting and beautification.
This is third, third reading of ordinance 20-96. Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I would like to ask for passage of ordinance 20-96.
Thank you, we have a motion to pass ordinance 20-96. Is there a second, Councilwoman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Yes, just to clarify, it's just approving changes as recommended by the commission to the language in our charter.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, the clerk will call the vote on the passage, please.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Leopard.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-96 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-98, introduced by Dawn Yanatuno. Ordinance amending sections 935.03 and 935.99 of Tiffin Codified Ordinances prohibiting camping in city parks and establishing penalties.
This is the third reading of ordinance 20-98. Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for passage of ordinance 20-98.
Thank you, we have a motion to pass ordinance 20-98. Is there a second, Councilman Leopard?
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Schuff.
Yes, just had a question here for Dawn or for the administration. As far as the camping goes, are we just asking that individuals or groups get a permit if they are going to camp in the park?
Yes.
Just, okay, so we're just requiring that they have a permit to do that?
Yeah, camping is not allowed in any of the parks except for by permit acquired through the city administration.
Okay, I remember they had the music fest out there a few years ago and they'd camped out there and stuff. I just want to make sure there was a permitting process or that we weren't banning it completely. Thank you.
The language of this is just making it stronger so that we don't have issues with people just because they're not set up for camping overall, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? The clerk will call the vote on the passage, please.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Leopard.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-98 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 20-99, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing installment of a street light on Olive Street and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-99.
Ordinance number 20-106, introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance enacting chapter 723 of the Tiffin Codified Ordinances to authorize and regulate mobile food vendors operating within the city.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-106.
The second reading.
You know what it said?
Yeah, yeah. And the next one too. No, not the next one, I said. Ordinance number 20-109, introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance amending chapter nine Streets Utilities and Public Services Code and chapter 1127 subdivision design standards adopting a revised public works improvements design manual and updating references to the design manual and update related fees to make consistence, consistent with ordinance number 1969.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-109.
Ordinance number 20-110, introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance zoning approximately 9.798 acres of land owned by R&amp;L Zeiss Family Limited Partnership III LLC and others, and proposed for annexation from Hope County as zone R4, multiple family residential district compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requires requirements of Tiffin City Charter and the Codified Ordinances.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-110. Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we table ordinance 20-110 in order for the joint planning commission meeting to take place.
Thank you, we have a motion to table ordinance 20-110. Is there a second, Councilman Schuff?
Yes, I will second Councilwoman Boyle's motion to table.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Clerk call the vote on the table, please.
Councilman Perry. Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Duff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-110 is tabled with a vote of 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 20-111, introduced by Don Yanatuno. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application, accept the deed, and take all other actions necessary to acquire the real property located at 43 West Market Street, Tiffin, Ohio, from the Seneca County Land Replantation Corp- Corporation, and to convey said real property to the Seneca County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation, AKA Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-111.
Ordinance number 20-112, introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance amending Sections 1169.02 and 1171.02 of the Tiffin Codified Ordinances, adding a nano-distillery as a permitted use in the C2 general commercial and C3 central business districts.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-112. Councilwoman Boyle.
Uh, yes, thank you, I would like to make a motion to table ordinance 20-112 in order for the joint public hearing to take place.
Thank you, we have a motion to table ordinance 20-112, is there a second? Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? The clerk will call the, Councilman Schuff.
Yes, quick question on ordinance 20-112, could anyone give a little backstory on that, or just where that came from?
Mayor?
It's economic development purposes, can't really see any more potential businesses that's interested in coming here, but we can't give any further details because of its protected.
Got it, thank you.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, I guess it's a follow-up to Councilman Schuff's question, and again, I guess I can look it up on Google, but what is a nano-distillery?
Mayor?
Uh, very much like a nano-brewery, it's a, a small-scale operation of a distillery. Uh, very small scale.
Any other questions or comments? The clerk will call the vote on the table, please.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Duff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Leopard.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-112 is tabled with a vote of 7 to 0. Uh, this time, I'd also like to announce a, a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission to be scheduled on November 16th at 7:10 PM. Uh, the purpose of the meeting will be to discuss zoning covered in ordinance 20-110, and amendments to Sections 1, Sections of the Codified Ordinances outlined in 20-112. Is that sufficient, Law Director? Thank you.
That's fine.
Ordinance 20-113, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a permanent easement and right-of-way for public road and highway purposes along Tiber Road and John Avenue.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-113.
That concludes the ordinances, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, I'd also, I'd also like to announce a public hearing to be scheduled on November 16th. Uh, the purpose of the public hearing will be to discuss the application of the DORA and the discussion of the ordinance to establish the DORA. Uh, this, this meeting will be conducted via Zoom between the city council and the public can join in through that process. Is that sufficient? Law Director, is there more I need to add, or?
No, that's fine, there is a required public notice in the local newspaper, and I believe that it will be appearing in this Wednesday's Advertiser Tribune. A copy of the DORA application for inspection by the public will be available at the, the mayor's office or right in front of the, the front door.
Okay. Is that, is that all the ordinances?
That concludes the ordinances, yes.
Thank you. We're now in your old business, is there anything for the good of the order? Councilman Jones.
Uh, under old business, I'm reluctant to bring this up, but, and you're not going to hear me say this often, but I was wrong. Two weeks ago, I mentioned that Little Hedges Park was part of 145, 147 Madison Street. Someone asked where that came from, I said it came from Charla Van Osgood. After the meeting, I, maybe the next day, I spoke with Charla Van Osgood on the phone and asked her where she got that information from. She corrected me and let me know, in a, in a nice tone of voice, that she put it in a letter to myself or city council that activities did, were going to take place and do take place in Little Hedges Park. I guess I was thinking Madison Street down to Little Hedges Park, so that came from myself, not from Charla Van Osgood, so I just wanted to make that public, and you won't hear me say this too many times, but I was wrong.
We accept your apology. Anyone else? Uh, Councilman Leopard.
Uh, Councilman Schuff, do you want to schedule a meeting now for the economic development and downtown planning?
Sure. What is, uh, what's looking better for the group, Wednesday or Thursday?
This week.
Yeah.
If you need me, I cannot be available Wednesday, but I am Thursday, but that's only if you need me.
Would you like to sit in, sit in on that one, Mayor?
Well, Dale or I will have to, so you can do it via Zoom, so one of us is going to have to be there.
Maybe let's try for Thursday then, does that work for you, Steve?
Uh, gonna be tied up from about 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock, and got a 7 PM meeting.
You want to try for 2 or 3 o'clock?
Yeah, that'll work. For me.
If you could do 3, it'd be better, so we can watch the governor at 2.
Yeah.
I will not be available at 3, Mayor, because of the ADA Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday at 3.
Also, I will not be available at 3, I'm not available until after 4 o'clock that day, if you want my attendance.
I would like to have you there, Law Director.
Dale, I thought the ADA meeting was at 7.
No, it's the 22nd.
Okay, I have it marked on my calendar at 7, so I'm sorry, it is 2 PM then.
At 3 PM on the 22nd.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is Amy Reinhardt still on with us? Doesn't appear so. Um, I'd like to make sure we have Amy there available too, should I schedule something tomorrow?
She cannot make it Thursday until 4, at the earliest.
Should we do Thursday at 4 then, is that okay with the group?
That'll work for me.
4 o'clock's fine for me.
It's fine with me.
Okay, I will call a Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee meeting to take place on October 22nd at 4 o'clock PM via Zoom. Uh, topics to be discussed are potential changes to the DORA cup and any other business that may come before the committee.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Schuff, is there anything else?
Rich, did you want to schedule that special meeting of council, I don't think we ever established a date, did we?
No, um, to, um, to vote on the DORA the 3rd, the 3rd, okay. Um, do we want, do we want to do it before or after Thanksgiving, I, I prefer doing it before Thanksgiving, on the 23rd, Monday before.
Fine with me.
Is that okay with everyone? Okay. I'm going to announce a, um, special meeting of Tiffin City Council for November, Monday, November 23rd at 6 o'clock, okay? Does that work, Dan, is that? Be a little internet?
I, I could probably, if I'm, I might be a little bit late, but it won't be much.
Okay, we just need you for the vote.
Right.
Okay. All right, well, we can make it 6:15.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, all right. I'm calling a special meeting of Tiffin City Council for Monday, November 23rd at 6:15, the purpose of which is to discuss we don't have an ordinance yet, but DORA application. Is that what I want to say, Mayor, or Law Director?
You would read for the, the third reading, the ordinance approving the, the DORA application and vote on passage, vote for passage.
Okay, thank you, that's what I want to say. Like he's always said, he's the smartest man in the room. Meaning Law Director. Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else for the good of the order? All right, God bless you all, and have a great week, thanks for all your hard work on behalf of the city of Tiffin, and we'll see you, good night.
Night.
Night. Goodnight, guys.